I don't like it.
Chicken soup, okay.
I think it's great.
But I am glad.
I hope you all like it.
I hope you like it.
This is the second.
Yeah.
Second, third.
Yeah, no, we, the one, the one that we approved was actually what he was.
They need to warn them.
And they had, you know, when these like, no, no, no.
She would actually go back to us and come to Tuesday.
Oh.
I haven't gotten to the steak part yet.
All we got was a purple.
Yeah, we'll try it though.
Cheese.
That is good.
That is good.
That is good.
That is good.
Well, we have a tall.
Oh.
Hey, how are you?
He said we all have a name, Jake, please. I sent her my.
I've been refining every time they say.
No, they're three large.
But they're not.
There's really other one.
But if you're gonna take out and bring in a bat of significant size, our arborist has to play.
So there is a little bit of controversy.
Sorry, I missed that.
There you go.
Also still.
Congratulations on my speech. You chose well, you're right here, Adam.
I'll send it tomorrow.
Hey, Georgie.
Oh, yeah.
Week thirty-three the other day.
Maybe.
They said he almost ran over you while Jay walking on a rep line across the crosswalk by the left side.
Yeah.
It's the area.
Yesterday, he like totally got a whole slate of chickens.
Right.
And he liked to ask him.
I mean, it's not gonna teach you.
How are you?
Great news.
Great news.
Good, how are you, Craig?
I'm certainly really, really enjoying it.
No, I thought he had a big hand.
Yeah, you know, yeah.
There you go.
I'm sorry.
I'm trying.
What's your?
You know, I'm a company.
Yeah.
Well, I was.
Nice to meet you.
You guys.
Oh, yeah.
Found the steak.
Kind of like.
We don't interact enough.
Yeah.
Saying this, I'm like, are you gonna let me interact?
Oh, well, I'm actually.
Oh, my gosh, I never invited you back.
I was new.
Oh, maybe.
I just haven't.
Just showing up.
Okay, I'll let him in that area.
Go through that.
What are you talking about?
He said.
And then they were gonna take.
I think.
He was like.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
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 Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Sending you my.
Maybe one year.
I know that's something.
I could do one.
Are there some things or?
Uh, there's a couple of things that I, so I was gonna send you.
Yeah.
The one that I.
Yeah.
Family.
I get it.
I'm sure you have stuff.
I'm sure.
I'm sure.
You're just.
Yeah.
It's very important.
It's very important.
Yeah.
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 There you go.
I'm sorry.
What's your?
You know, I'm a company.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You know, I'm a company.
Yeah.
So you said you're like.
Yeah.
About the guy.
We'll get a better.
Appreciate you.
Yeah.
Hey, Travis, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Gotta interact a little bit on Facebook.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Found the steak.
Yeah.
Kind of like.
We don't interact enough.
Yeah.
Saying this, I'm like, are you gonna let me interact?
Oh, well, I'm actually.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, I never invited you back.
I was new.
Oh, maybe.
I just haven't.
Just showing up.
Okay, I'll let him in that area.
Go through that.
What are you talking about?
He said.
And then they were gonna take.
I think.
He was like.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry.
It's nice to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
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 Good.
Yeah.
Sending you my.
Maybe one year.
I know that's something.
Okay.
Are there some things or?
Uh, there's a couple of things that I, so I was gonna send you.
Yeah.
One that I.
Yeah.
Family.
I get it.
I'm sure you have stuff.
Yeah.
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 I'm sorry.
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 It's nice to be here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
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 Good.
Yeah.
Sending you my.
Maybe one year.
I know that's something.
I could do one.
Okay.
Are there some things or?
Uh, there's a couple of things that I, so I was gonna send you.
Yeah.
The one that I.
Yeah.
Family.
I get it.
I'm sure you have stuff.
I'm sure.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
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 Don't worry.
Yeah.
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 You're just.
Yeah.
It's very important.
We're encloseable, we get the message.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
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 Meeting to order here. We are thrilled and grateful to have the planning commission. We've spent time getting to know each other and certainly appreciate great support that you provide to us. As you review and ask great questions related to the projects that are presented in the city. Um, we'll start with a roll call. Uh.
Recording in progress.
Bruce McKay.
George Hanley.
Travis Holman.
Ray Christensen.
Rachel Little.
Gary Garrett. I think Becky Bogdan is planning to join us.
Jonathan, planning commission.
Jonathan, Adam Shin.
Andrew South.
Lisa Johnson.
I'm a brony.
Brian Jones.
And.
Joyce Ravier.
The candle.
And Melissa. Melissa, say your name.
I want to.
Sure.
And we acknowledge several other staff members who are joining us as well. Just by way of review, uh, this is a public meeting. Only the presenters and those invited by the council may speak or ask questions. Otherwise, unless otherwise invited by the chair, please wait to speak until called upon. Please be sure to speak as loudly as possible so the record is clear and those attending virtually can hear also. All right, we have, uh, three presentations this evening. The first is by, um, Brian Jones. As is the second and the third. But we'll start with his presentation on the roles and responsibilities. Separation of, uh, we will still have to, council members and commissioners.
Thank you, Brian.
Good evening.
Yeah, I told you that just coming to Brian's show, I'm gonna try to. Even present, because I can't answer questions, like me, I'm more than anything.
Um, fight it up, Brian.
I'm trying to be funny.
Yeah.
I'm trying to.
They're saying.
We're the joke.
That was just funny, like, with what I started, obviously. Um, so. Planning commissioners, I don't know as well, so for those of you who don't know me, my name's Brian Jones and I'm the city attorney. Um, and so I advise the council and the mayor and supervise the legal department, you know, and attorneys. And we provide services to all the departments of the city, including development services. And sometimes you probably have seen some of my staff at planning commission meetings and at other activities. So. There's a few things here that we wanted to talk about. Some of this came from council suggestions, so when I don't talk about what you all wanted, you got it off. Don't, at the end, tell me what it is that you wanted me to say and we'll keep going from there. So, um, first of all, I guess it might be, try not to dwell on this, but I thought it might be interesting to just point out for those who have only been associated with the government here in Provo, that our form of government is actually different than most of the rest of the state. Though we operate on the council, mayor, the whole of the government, we only have handful of cities that actually do that. Uh, where we have separation of powers. So if you think about, you know, the federal system, we've got the president and congress, executive branch and legislative branch. Uh, Provo City actually works in that same style of government. Most of the cities in Utah don't. They actually work in some form of government where the city council actually runs the city entirely. They have a, either a city manager or they either be the member of the council and the council directs both administrative and legislative actions. In our form of government, with the separation of powers, the council has what I call the big three. That's why I have three primary responsibilities. Pass laws, oversee the budget, and then give administrative oversight. So in some ways, it's a subset of passing. But the council does with their administrative oversight is. At least the nuclear option is, we don't like what you're doing, so we won't give you money to do it anymore. Right, that's, that's the hammer, uh, for the administrative oversight piece. So, so that's what the council does and then the administrative, the mayor and her staff, they run the rest of the city. Including appointing the planning commissioners, which the council then has to be able to buy some consent for those. So, you're like the planning. Uh, you all know this, you've got, you've had your training from Bill, so I'll talk to the other side of the room now. Um, so the planning commission, uh, does a couple of things and again, does different things in Provo than necessarily in the rest of the state. It's also something you may not have been aware of. So the primary responsibility for the planning commission is to be an advisory body to review and make recommendations to the legislative body, being the council, on the general plan and land use regulations. They also, under state code, make recommendations to the council about who should be delegated authority to make other land use decisions. And in Provo, that's already happened and those recommendations have been qualified in city code. And those recommendations are, and, and that is now the law in Provo City, which is that the planning commission also makes decisions on discretionary, uh, um, land use approvals. That's not actually required by state code. So in some other jurisdictions, the land, the primary land use authority for applications is actually administrative staff and not planning. And one of the ways that you, that, um, everybody has experienced the, I guess I shouldn't use the word frustration, but one of the ways that this plays out that's different here than in some other jurisdictions, for example, is conditional use permits. Conditional use permits are delegated to the planning commission by city code, not required to be heard by the planning commission by state code. Which creates an interesting dynamic, right? Because the law regarding conditional use permits, as you're well aware, since you've proposed this many times and you've had dozens of people show up to your meetings, is that they must be approved if they meet the code. Right, it's not actually a discretionary application where the planning commission gets to hear the application go, we will grant this conditional use permit if we like it and deny it if we don't like. It's actually a matter of if it meets the code, it must be granted. Um, which can create some frustration for the public, as you've all seen, because they show up to these conditional use permit hearings and voice all of their reasons why they hate the application and then expect the planning commission to exercise some discretion and deny. It's been fun for you, you know, I've been here, right? Which is exactly why in some jurisdictions, the planning commission doesn't actually hear those. Uh, because it's not required and it's not required that there be a public hearing on those. You could just delegate those to staff and have staff just to review them for compliance with code and approve them. Um, anyway, I bring that up just for discussion. We've discussed it a few times over the years. There's never been a lot of traction to the idea of moving it. Um. So I won't say any more about that unless somebody has a question. Travis.
So what was, if you could go back in time, what was the reason that it was structured this way?
I don't actually know, that predates even me. Um, like I said, just different jurisdictions, uh, differ on it. If I had to just guess, I think that there, I think that there may have been a feeling that, well, I, I think, my guess is two, is actually two part. One is they didn't know who else to give it to, right? Uh, and, and two, it was maybe an expectation that, uh, planning commission has a little more accountability for their decisions because they're actually appointed. Uh, rather than staff and a feeling that maybe they're a little bit more, it's a more transparent process because there is the opportunity for those hearings. Even though, like I said, those hearings can be very frustrating for the public because they think they're coming to sway people and that's not actually what the purpose of the hearing is.
Do we have a sense of what percentage of these conditional use permits get approved by the planning commission? Is it a hundred percent? I mean, I guess I should say this, that, is there any difference between what the planning kit, commit, commission might approve and what, say, staff might approve? Because there's some great area there where they're more, a little bit more objective or, you know, do you get what I'm getting at?
Probably a better question for Bill.
I can't think of a conditional use permit that's been denied. Any of you, maybe you think of one.
We've made some recommendations, which I think have been implemented.
What?
Um, yeah, done that.
Um, but the recommendations or suggestions or requirements you may have been, uh, related to the impact of the conditional use itself, right? So again, it's staying pretty much within, kind of, planning commission actually couldn't require something that's not.
My guess, man, to your question is that it's been many, many years that conditional uses have been with city council, with planning commission. And since that time, there have been court cases that have made it for administrative, there have been court decisions that have said, cities don't have a lot of discretion here, you have to approve it. I think that's, those, some of those cases have come after when planning commission first started hearing conditional uses. It's been that long, planning commission's been hearing.
It just seems like maybe it would make sense to just make it administrative, but, I mean, I, I've had some issue with some special use permit or conditional use permits personally.
Right.
But there was nothing we could do. So it just seemed like maybe that's something that's not best use of their time.
The thing I was thinking about that makes that useful, to have it be a public process, to even though you can't say no if they need the criteria. Having them in that room and learning that helps them to understand the process better. I feel like if they don't like the administrative decision, they can appeal that. If they don't like the planning commission decision, they can appeal that and having it be a public hearing where people have come to give feedback makes that appeal seem a little bit.
Okay.
Logical, like it's a.
I know.
It still might not be overturned because of some law, but.
Right.
I don't know, I feel like it gives it more.
More transparency.
It's a good feedback.
Yeah.
If it's done behind closed doors, nobody really would show up to argue against it and even though it's still just illegitimate.
But we might get more appeals because nobody knows what the decision is.
Right. Or, I mean, and you still have people who come every time thinking that the conditional use permit is something they can sway, they can change, but I just feel like having that process is frustrating, if it is to be part of it on your side.
Hmm.
I still feel like it's valuable.
You think, a couple of things, I think there's, is value to allowing them to come in front of a public floor and state why they meet the conditional use or not, right? There is that kind of review, which is nice. Um, and then, you know, I'm thinking of a particular case recently, uh, where the police department was asked to throw a conditional use. I thought it was very important to have a public, trans, parish process, if an impartial board, to hear that, right? Even though we were just looking at, if they met the conditional use conditions or not, um, it still was valuable to them in public.
Uh, another thing that occurs to me that, uh, that I see as an advantage is we have had some cases where I have had, or my staff have had attorneys for other parties demanding that the mayor direct the planning mission to approve or not approve permit. And it's been very easy for me to say, I can't, we, she can't do that, we don't have the, that authority. If we were having the exact same commit, uh, conversation about her ordering Bill to do it.
Yeah.
It'd be harder for me to say that. Does that make sense? So that actually is, is something that I've seen in a few cases that, that where you have a degree of independence that is more easily explained.
I also think, uh, some of those, um, that have been appealed since we, in the last few years, um, having, having the conversation and the feedback given sort of gave a record of everybody had an opportunity to talk about this and you heard everything, said that, I, I guess it makes that feel softer.
Hmm.
Part of it, you don't need to do it.
Good feedback, good comments. And do you yell?
Yeah, to that, have we, have we done a good job of that? I think of like, we had a cell tower that.
That's the one I was seeing.
Built, right?
Hmm.
I tried to make a record of the positions they were taking and why they're not being standards, but was it helpful?
Yeah, I think so, I, I think so. Um, I'm trying to remember, I wasn't directly involved, I, I was tangentially involved in that and saw some of the stuff. I think that you're right, that, uh, the mere fact that there is a hearing, I, I guess I would say, whether the decision is right or wrong, the mere fact that there is a hearing, like, makes a record that makes it easier to decide whether the decision is right or wrong.
Right.
As opposed to, you know, Bill or his staff just reviewing some documents and making a decision and signing into piece of paper, there's no record of what the decision-making process is. But, and I think that you're, I think that you're really like reading records and, uh, creating, documenting what you recommend and why.
I wonder if one thing that would make it less frustrating for the public is when we send out announcements and maybe even at the beginning of the meeting to explain the standards for conditional use permit review, right? Um, so that they know what's happening and they know what, the way there is and is not. So.
I have a question. When, um, so I know the public gets notified about certain kinds of things going on in like certain distance radius, like a project that's happening, they'll, they'll get a mail, is it a mail notice? Like the mail comes?
Yes.
What are, what are the conditions in the, like, the, the radius of distance for where that, those get sent out? People are confused about, like, they haven't received notice or something.
It's five hundred feet, but we're pretty generous on that and, and we're, in other words, if it touches the corner of a piece of property, you know, we've noticed that property, that even if the house is another hundred feet away from where that five hundred, the radius is. So we try to be generous and go beyond the five hundred feet, but there's never a question. But the thing that can be most controversial, initial use permits, no changes, general plan amendments, we put a sign on the property, a big yellow sign on the property. It says, this is what's being requested, this is the planner to contact if you have questions. So people very frequently overlook the fact that that sign was there for a week before the meeting. Um, but we try to, and, and those things that we do go beyond what the state requires.
I mean, maybe we should reconsider, because there has been numerous occasions where there's been people that complained they didn't receive notice. Even though we're meeting the, the code with notice, maybe the code needs to be modified to give more advanced notice.
Certainly something that could happen. I will say, my personal experience over fifteen years is that if you personally knocked on the door of every person in the city and told them about something, you would still have people show up and say they didn't get those. And I think part of that problem is the mailing notice we send them is a postcard, a yellow postcard. My guess is a lot of people see that and go to even look at it, they think it's chug down, they just throw it away. That's my guess.
I think the big one, uh, was, because it's based off of like county property records, right? And, and, and so there's like LLCs or absentee landlords and, and.
Right.
They might get noticed, but the occupants don't.
Yes, that does happen. Wherever the tax notice gets mailed, that's where we mail. I don't know. Yeah, certainly something worth discussing, that'd be something that they, um, we could, the council, change. Um, if there weren't other comments about that, I think the last comment that I had in the last, idea I was going to present on this first topic was just the idea was moving, I've talked a little bit about what each of you do as far as the interaction between the two of you. Um, so, again, I think you all know this, but just, I guess for the avoidance of doubt, as we say in the documents. Um, you're two separate independent bodies, neither one of you is subordinate to the other or, or, you're independent. So, uh, now it's true that the, on legislative decisions, the council gets final say, but that doesn't mean that it's the job of the planning commission to try to align your recommendations with what they, with what they want, right? You are an independent advisory body, uh, appointed to give your judgment on whether you recommend approval or denial. And the council then gets to take that and they can approve, deny or, or change, uh, whatever's been proposed based on your recommendation. Likewise, it's not the council's purview to tell you how, what you ought to be recommending or to, or to mandate policies that you ought to be abiding by. The two of you are separated distinct and you each have your own rules and you're, you're independent that way, so. Yes, council.
Um, but in, in the same way that three council members, more than three council members can't meet privately without posting a public notice, is it the same with commissioners? A group of more than three can't meet? Or can we elaborate, like three of us, three of them to discuss an issue? What's your review?
Well, okay, so the direct answer to your question as far as the open meetings act goes is that, yes, the planning commission is a public body. And as a public body, any meeting as defined in the code of the planning commission must be noticed. And that means anytime that there is a majority of the planning commission in a meeting that someone with authority on the planning commission convened for the purpose of discussion, discussing planning commission business, then that is a meeting of the planning commission and it needs to be, and it needs to be publicly noticed.
So since there are nine of them, actually four can meet.
Correct. Correct. Yes, because it requires, a- and, again, kind of like this meeting, I think, did we notice that, which one did we notice this as? Council? We noticed this one as a council meeting because the council convened the meeting, right? So you can actually, from a legal perspective, you can have a meeting of the council or even of a council committee that the entire planning commission shows up to as observers or visitors. That doesn't violate the Open Meetings Act because it's not their meeting that they convened for the purpose of talking about their business. Now, having said that, I would, so that's the Open Meetings Act piece of it. I have a little bit of caution to throw out about what you just said about, it's, I, I think it's, if you're having a committee meeting where you're, like, for instance, if we had these committee meetings years ago about streamlining the development process. If you were having a meeting where a group of counselors and a group of commissioners were getting together to have a task force meeting about what are things we could do to streamline the development process, then totally, I think that's totally fine. What I would, what I think you want to avoid is anything that gives the impression that the purpose of the meeting is for the council to tell the planning commission how to do things. We think homeowner occupancy is, is so important that we want you to deny, to recommend denial of everything that doesn't include homeowner occupancy. That, that I think is crossing the line because that's actually you telling them how to make policy decisions, but they have an independent view. Does that make sense?
That's helpful.
Yes.
There's another important distinction to your question, and that is that as elected officials, it's completely appropriate for you to meet with individual applicants, developers or citizens. As unelected officials, they are not, they should not do that, and it's actually in their rules not to do that. And the reason for that is, is that as unelected officials, we don't want individual members being lobbied. If, and, if a developer or an applicant has something to say to the planning commission, we make it really clear and as easy as we can to say that to the entire commission. Send your input to me, send it to my secretary, and we'll make sure everyone on the planning commission gets it, but we ask planning commissions to please be cautious. But we ask planning commissioners to please be cautious not to meet individual individuals.
I was going to piggyback on the Bill's thing and say, if you want the cover, I will say it's my official recommendation that you need to be careful about giving. Personally, I would not recommend that any individual counselor met with developers by themselves. Groups of, you know, if two or more, or at least somebody from council staff or record the meeting, which you don't have to tell them that you're doing, but for political purposes, probably better to tell them that you're recording. But I have seen situations before where individual counselors have met with developers, and then later the developer is in public meetings or even in court filings insisting that Counselor X said such and such, and that's why they went through with their plan, and that's why they spent their money, et cetera, et cetera. So it is not, as Bill says, it's not prohibited, but I think it still merits some cautious thinking about when and how you do it. Anything else on the roles and responsibilities topic from the development agreements? Let's do. Counselor Whipple?
Yeah, I was just going to ask you to go over what it means for recommending approval or denial.
I'm going to do that at the end of the development agreement topic because it's in my slides already. So it kind of fits here, but because it's in my development agreement slides, I'm going to go over it here.
And content's awake.
Second item already?
We're a second item, yeah. So for those of you, if anybody's looked at these slides beforehand, there's a large section in the middle that I will skip because it's legalese that
It always hurts my heart when you skip that.
It's my legal basis study that I did years ago and kind of like that slide I mentioned in my budget that I put so much work into it, I couldn't take it out. This is kind of similar. There's actually a version of this slide that's like twice as long that I already, that I gave the very first time down. So, development agreements, let's see if I can place that on the screen. There we go. Okay. Okay, so actually let me switch up here to the slideshow so I can see the same thing you're seeing. Bring it back, be a little tiny. Okay, so development agreement, defined by code, is just a written agreement between the municipality and a party that controls the development of the area of land. That's not so helpful, because it's kind of vague. So state law specifically says that it can contain any term the municipality considers necessary to accomplish the purposes of the Land Use Act. It has to explicitly disclose three established state law rights that are restricted by the agreement. And there's a couple of other things here about assurance bonds. And there's actually a prohibition in state code that says you can't impose specific design element requirements on one or two family dwellings. But you actually, there's an exception to the can by the government. So on the previous slide, when I said you can contain any term necessary for accomplishing LDA, these are all the purposes of LDA, which is pretty much anything. Pretty much everything within town's purview with regard to just fostering the, well, we sometimes refer to as a police power, to help welfare and safety. There's a few things that you can't do. These are highly specific. You can't say that we won't pass future land use regulations. You can't include a requirement to rezone property in the future. There is, there's another one, and this is, I guess, addressed mostly to the council because I think you've probably heard me advocate for not doing this over time. You also can't use a land use, a development agreement to allow someone to do something that the code would otherwise prohibit unless you follow the entire land use process for approving the development agreement, meaning that the planning commission themselves also see the development agreement and issue a recommendation on whether to approve or deny the development. Now, I have, I've been consistent for 15 years now in saying, I just think that's a horrible idea and you should pretty much never do it. You may recognize that there was one case recently where it was the only case I've seen in my career where I actually thought it made sense to do it, which was with regard to this annexation project out by the river where they already had entitlements in Orem. They wanted to be annexed into Provo. And so we actually did that. We actually granted them rights. They would have had in Orem, but they would not have had in Provo through means of the development agreement by having the development agreement built through the entire process. That's the only instance I've seen in my career where I think it actually makes sense to do that. Otherwise, I think it's generally a really bad idea where you are actively creating a precedent for extreme spot zoning, where you are, you're essentially opening the door to developers wanting to have a pro zone for every parcel, where the pro zone is defined by the development agreement instead of defined by the code. So, anyway, moving on. So here's where I'm going to try to get even briefer than the slides are and just talk about why, and this is supposed to just be some context for why I'm going to say some of the things I say later about how new children developing are arriving at development agreements. Development agreements historically arose out of a tension between vesting rights and exaction laws, right? So vesting rights, very simply, is just the idea that once you get an application in and your application is under consideration, you are vested in having all the rights of the law that existed at the time your application was filed. Completely, well, mostly unrelated, is this other area of law called exaction law, which says that municipalities cannot require developers to do things that cost them money that are not tied reasonably both to what their development is and cost, right? So there's these, there are these court cases out there referred to as Nolan and Dolan. One of those weird legal coincidences that the names rhyme. But they're two different cases and they say that there has to be a reasonable nexus between what the city is requiring and what the project is. And there has to be a reasonable apportionment, reasonable proportion between the cost of the exaction and the cost of the project. So you can't, for instance, say you're redoing the front porch of your house, so you have to contribute to the park two blocks down the street. That's, there's no reasonable, there's no nexus there. You also can't say you're redoing your porch, which is going to cost you $2,000, so you have to do $50,000 of improvements to the sidewalk. Okay? Because now you've violated the reasonable proportion, right? So there's lots of things that cities like to do and like to receive from developers that don't fit into those constitutional requirements, right? We love to get stuff for free, right, as the mayor likes to say. Developers sometimes, though, also like to get stuff from the city that they wouldn't otherwise be able to get. And the way that this really all started was with multi-phase developments. That's where development agreements really kind of were created. Because what you had happen, you had developers come in and say, I want to build this huge project, but it's going to cost so much that I have to build it in phases. So they would apply for a zone change for the entire project, they would get it approved, but they would only submit their application for phase one. And while phase one was pending, the city would change the zoning. And now phase two and three aren't available anymore, right? So the idea, the original idea behind development agreements where the developers would come in and say, I will offer you a bunch of stuff that you couldn't otherwise ask for, right? I will offer to do stuff for you that would otherwise be an unconstitutional exaction if you will promise not to change the zone. So if, you saw a few minutes ago on one of the slides that a development agreement can't promise to rezone in the future. It can't do that, but it can promise not to rezone in the future, right? So that was kind of where development agreements started, and the main usage was for multi-phase projects, for cities to get benefits in exchange for promising the developer that they were vested for the entire project and not just for the first phase. Okay? So that raises a question because as you all have noticed, we've used them for a lot of things in buildings that don't, that aren't described by what I just described. So, so here's, so Provo's been a little bit different because we don't have a lot of multi-phase projects anymore. Most of our land is already developed. We still have a few. But we've principally used these to get guarantees that what is proposed is actually going to be built, right? So with the infamous example that, again, predates me, but has been talked about in every development agreement meeting for a time eternal, is the Chevron down here on Fifth West, right? That they came in and they proposed a medical building, got the rezone, and then built the Chevron. And I don't know that it was, I don't have any belief that it was deceptive. Did it change owners?
No, it didn't. They just couldn't get financing for the medical building and then decided, well, the easy thing to do in the zone allows.
Because once they had the zone change, it allowed both, right?
My sister cheats and I cook like a drug, so I see the logic.
I stop there all the time. So yeah, exactly. So that's, but that event was what triggered one of the big changes in how Provo used development agreements and for Provo to be more aggressive about using them. So that our standard development agreement template, even if it doesn't say anything else, just says your project plan is attached in as exhibit and the only thing you can build is what's shown on that exhibit. That's the default development agreement if we don't add anything to it, right? And then the next purpose is if there's some specific thing that we don't like about the proposal or maybe not even don't like about it, that we don't like about what the zone would allow, then we sometimes impose those restrictions in the development agreement. And we say, so the classic example is density, right? You can, and I'm going to throw out numbers here because I don't know that, but you know, LDR allows 25, and MDR allows 45. You want LDR because you want, you want MDR because you want 26, but we don't want you to have 45, right? So we approve the MDR and say you can have your 26 because it's MDR, but the development agreement says you can't have any more than that. So that's one of the other classic examples. Okay, so, but the question becomes, and this is, again, this goes into when I first, not even became the city attorney, when I first became the council attorney back in 2011, we were using development agreements a lot. And we were using them to impose a lot of restrictions that would have been described, in my view, when I talked about illegal exactions a few minutes ago, right? And so the very first version of this presentation that I gave probably 11 years ago was, are development agreements even legal? Right? Are development agreements legal if they are used to accomplish receiving what would otherwise be unconstitutional exactions? And so again, I'll skip over a few slides. There's a few slides here about the different legal theories under which they could be challenged. But at the end of the day, the point that's important for all of you to make, to understand, other than Rachel who wants to know the real point here is just the thing, the thing that prevents someone from raising the legal challenges that I just skipped over is the fact that the development agreement is voluntary. And so that's why it's so important that the process that we use to enter into development agreements establishes and documents that it's voluntary. Now, you know, there's questions here, if you want something and you can't get it without promising something else, is it really voluntary? Right? I mean, that's the question. But at the end of the day, the legal argument is yes, because you want it, right? If you are promising something in exchange for what you want to get, that doesn't have to be given to you, then it's voluntary. So now, which goes back to, I think, something I skipped over in one of the earlier slides, but one of the things that's actually in state law is what you can't do with development agreements is we, as a city, we cannot require a development agreement when someone is applying for something that they already have the right to. Okay? So if the code allows somebody to do something and they come in and submit an application to do that thing, we can't, we cannot require them to enter into a development agreement in order to get permission to do that, right? That's why they only come up in the context of typically zone changes. They could also come up in the context of an ordinance change, right? So when, so they really only apply to things that involve the council. When the planning commission is doing their stuff that doesn't ever come to the council, that's the kind of stuff that a development agreement doesn't apply to. But when you're doing those things that you are making a recommendation to the council on, those are the kinds of things that the council can say, you know, we don't have to approve your application, so we're not going to unless you address our following concerns. Right? And that's where the development agreement comes from. And so, let's see, so that goes to this, which some of you have probably seen before. This was kind of a role-playing theater script that I drew up the first time I did this about the conversation that we engage in, right? The important point here is not that you memorize, you know, the lines in this script. The important point here is that for both the planning commission and the council, that if you think that there is a concern that needs to be addressed contractually through a development agreement, you need to specify what the concern is, right? It's not a question of saying, will you enter into a development agreement and then start in to negotiate the development agreement? It's a question of articulating what it is that you are concerned about, either about their proposal or about what the zone would allow that isn't talked about anymore. Does that make sense? And so if you articulate those things, then you're building a record of why this project would not get approved if the developer doesn't address that concern and creates the opportunity for us to discuss having a development agreement to address the concern. And so this comes to what Counselor Whipple was asking me, was talking to me about before, right? That said, all of this, I think, is useful information for the planning commission to have as far as understanding how the process works. My personal preference would be that your reports of action don't ever mention development agreements, right? Because of the fact, because of this very fact that what we're trying to build the record of is what the concern is, right? And so my recommendations, my suggestions to you about how to do that, and this goes a little bit against the happy valley, we want to make everybody happy, right? But the number one recommendation I have is that if there's something that worries you, you should recommend denial. Okay? So bottom line meaning, or rephrasing that, is that it's better, from a legal perspective, for you to recommend denial unless your concern is addressed instead of to recommend approval if your concern is addressed, right? Those sound very similar, but they're a little bit different, yes?
If, a lot of them that have come to us lately have come with the explanation by staff that the developer has already proffered a development agreement. And in that case, because we are under the impression that that's something he's already said, it's perfectly fine not to deny it because It's perfectly fine not to deny it because it's already been proffered. Is that correct?
I think that's fine, yes. But I would make that part of the record, right? I would be explicit about saying.
Because the developer has proffered.
We have recommended approval of the project as presented, which included a development agreement that addressed our concerns.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Sometimes it actually says from the city staff that they recommend approval with the following conditions. So we say that.
That would be, yeah, we're saying that.
And you're saying, don't say that.
Well, I don't know. Bill, do you want to?
This is typically Aradon, zone changes are discretionary things and they're typically standard like meet CRC requirements. Because there are some outstanding ones that staff is confident can be resolved, but haven't been resolved at the date of your meeting. I would be very careful of staff to put into a staff report. Conditions on a zone change or a discretionary request.
It seems like we have had some that say. That one of the conditions is that the development agreement offered gets entered into or something like that, so.
Yeah, if the developer has proffered one.
That that would be a standard condition.
But we shouldn't express our concerns and say, well, we recommend approval.
We want you to proffer one.
As long as this has worked out or these conditions.
And I do agree with Brian that if you have concerns, if you feel like aren't sufficiently addressed, recommend denial.
Okay.
Because I think that sends a really clear message to those guys about what you're trying to do and what you're trying to achieve.
What happens when they say, okay, we can do that right then and there? Do you just say thank you for that and send it on? Or do you talk about that and then it gets included as a piece of property development agreement?
I'd be inclined like to, we still say denial, like unless that, that exchange of the proffer still has to occur with. With the developer.
That would be my suggestion. It's, I don't know that it's the end of the world. It's not the end of the world until somebody actually challenges, challenges on it, right? But that would still be my recommendation would be to say, thank you very much. I, I think it's, I think it's good to express on the record and for it to appear in the report of action. That their proffer does meet your concern. But I think I would still phrase the overall recommendation, I would still advise or recommend phrasing the overall recommendation. Recommend denial of the project as originally presented. Unless my, our concerns are addressed through the, you know, as, as has been proffered in this meeting. Does that make sense? Yes?
So I'm seeing here, we say, it says the planning commission should not demand or request developer development agreement. Is that true for the city council as well? The city cannot be the one to initiate requesting a development agreement? The developer has to be the one to like formally proffer. Because I've heard that before and I'm, sorry, what's that?
I think that the script role play he had.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm.
I'm going to the script.
But that's a planning commission. He's asking if the city council has the same limitations.
Yeah, but I think that's scripted for the city council. The city council also has the same kind of script.
So we can ask as long as we're not asking.
Yeah.
But lots of times we ask, is that going to be okay? And the answer from the city is that'll be taken care of in the developmental, in the development agreement.
But that's because there's already been discussions between staff and the developer.
So what your meaning is, we're out, we've already proffered an agreement some sort and we intend to make sure that that's part of it.
That that thing has already been proffered and staff's already putting that into the development agreement or already has been.
Okay.
Now, I'm not necessarily suggesting that the words development agreement never need to be spoken. It's, it's not that scary of a world, right? And in fact, we have often engaged in conversations. With, I'm trying to remember if I took that. Slide out, right? So I don't know if you got down this far into reading it, but. But you know, if you've got a, if you've got a sophisticated developer, usually if you just say to them. Well, I'm really concerned about the, about the excess density that allowed by that zone. How are you going to guarantee me that that's not going to be the case? And if you got a, if you have a sophisticated developer, they're going to say, I'd be happy to proffer a development agreement. If you've got somebody that's their first time, that's never been through this before, you know, and they're in the scenario too and they're like, I don't know. And that's where, again, we can say the words development agreement. It's even okay for council to say, to say something like, well. I'm really concerned about that thing, so I need a guarantee. You've said that you would, that you're willing to give that guarantee. Would you be willing to offer into a, enter into a development agreement to, to solidify that guarantee? That's okay. What I worry about is that doesn't happen very much, but I've seen it happen sometimes in the past. Is going, is, you know, the other end of the spectrum is, well, I'm going to vote no on this unless you give me a development agreement that, that promises me the following, right? Because that is, that's taking away from the appearance of voluntariness by actually issuing your demands. It's different than them saying, well, I'm not going to do that. And you saying, well, I need, we needed, we need that in writing. Is that okay? That's different than you saying you must do X, Y, and Z that are things that they've never even, you know, mentioned, right? Does that make sense? Okay. I think we're almost done. The last. Last couple of slides were just some reminders about be specific about what you want or about what your concern is. Be specific about what your concern is. If there's anything about the project that's so important, you would not approve it if it wasn't for that thing being taken care of. You should say that, right? But then, as you say that, you need to remember that the only thing that matters is the final vote, okay? So if one of you or two of you or three of you say, I would not approve this except for. X. And that's as far as the discussion ever goes and there's never a vote that says something about that. Then that doesn't have to be in the development agreement and they're still getting their approval anyway, right? So again, the middle, the middle bullet point here is, is kind of the important one. When something is so important to you that you think that it's what controls, then you should make a motion. So that the body can actually express their view on that. So, any questions, comments about developments? Yes, councilman?
Yeah, so we've been getting lots of. Comments and discussion about the river. And trees and everything. And I was wondering if you could speak to this bit in the, the development. Landscaping requirements about saving existing vegetation. Have you reviewed this lately?
I have not.
Oh, it's fun. 15.20.030. Where it says that the planning commission can review the removal of vegetation if it's proposed in a development plan. So if there are large trees, clusters of trees or clusters of large bushes, they're supposed to be incorporated into the development. Unless the city arborist says they should be taken out. And if they are taking it out, then the planning commission should say, okay, you can cut down those trees. If I'm reading that correctly.
Okay.
So should our planning commission be asking about how developments intend to protect or incorporate existing trees?
Well, Bill, isn't that going to be at some point, that's part of their landscape plan, right?
Yes.
So, so, so. I don't know that the planning commission needs to be asking that at the zone change, change stage, right? But it's going to come up to them when, when they actually apply for their permits. And they, and the project plan approval actually includes the landscape design.
We've done, we've brought it up before particularly along. More than we've done that particularly along developments over river.
It's been in the slots we do.
At the river bottoms and we did it down here at the delta.
But we also said specifically that. We were recommending approval of the zone change because we knew a project plan was coming.
And we would have chance to review it further. And also because. We sort of agreed that it would be better to have new good trees than keep the old ones, so.
I like this idea that the arborist can be involved to make that call.
I think that's good.
Yeah, but it's just. Kind of fun reading code and realizing that we've got some tools in there that maybe we'd forgotten about because it's been so long since they were created to have it used on.
That particular tool would apply even if there was no zone change involved, right?
It's more likely without a zone change.
Yeah, yeah. Now, on the other hand, council, right, your, your discretion about why you approve zone changes is pretty much unfettered. So if, if that's your, you know, if you have a concern about that, we can just flat out deny the zone change until you. I mean, so for example, in this exact scenario that we're talking about, you could say. I'm really worried that we don't have enough specificity to know about what is happening to the landscape at this point in time. So I would be inclined to vote against this zone change until I have some assurances about what the vegetation plan is going to be. And basically continue the item until they come back with a development agreement that has a landscape plan attached, right? And you could do that if that was your concern.
Yeah, but and often when we're, we're doing it with the development agreement, they have a fully fleshed out. The exact.
Right.
Design and everything of, of how the property is going to be used or they still get input from public works and. Some things necessarily change. So would it be possible, even after a zone change is done, if they're coming back with their development plan to. To incorporate this process as well?
Well, it's, it should be automatic, right? Because that should be, and this is where, and this is one of my, this was one of my concerns about. How development agreements were being used when I first started advising the council is that. Development agreements are a useful tool. They are not a magic bullet. And they are susceptible to a whole host of problems, one of which is they're not in the code and people forget that they exist, right? So, so from an institutional process procedure, it's always better to have the code say. What the code needs to say to achieve the right outcome. Than it is to rely on developing to get the right out, right? And so, so that, that, so for, again, kind of returning to this process piece. Remember that from a philosophical standpoint. A zone change application is asking you to consider if the things that that zone allows. Are appropriate for the piece of property that the zone change is being applied to, right? Philosophically, a zone change is not really about whether you like the specific project. In theory, the zone change question is about taking, it's, it's a step more specific than the general plan, right? You've got a general plan that says, we generally believe that this area should be commercial. A zone change is, we more specifically believe. That any of the uses allowed in the DT1 zone are appropriate on this piece of property. That's theoretically the question you're being asked. It's not the question that the council ever likes to answer, right?
Because we do go ahead and preemptively rezone things, even though we do certainly want. Like high density housing north of Fifth North and Joaquin or something like that, but we haven't.
Right.
Gone ahead and change it because we still do want that oversight over specific projects that come to us.
Right. And so in an ideal world. I know that we're rewriting the zoning code right now and I promise you that. No matter how much money or time we spend on rewriting it, it won't accomplish what I'm about to say. But in an ideal world, the zoning code would be written in such a way. That once you, once somebody got a zone, you would be okay with anything you did with your problem. Because the zoning code would control anything that they might do and you would be okay with everything that they could do, right? In practice, that doesn't really happen. And in, in practice, I think we're quite a long ways away from that. And so that's where we get to this situation of, of development agreements. Yes, Council Christians?
So let's take the, the scenario of the warehouse space near the river. I'm very concerned about the buffer between the river and the warehouse space. So you could say in a, so I could say, I'm not comfortable with you coming up with cool landscaping. No, I'm not cool with you taking down all the trees, period. I think there ought to be a, make up a number, a hundred foot, you know, ban on each side of the river. So you could do that either through a development agreement or through what? You could do it preemptively through code, but your code would have to be in place before they submit their application, right? So in this case, it would have to be through a development agreement.
Right. In this case, it would have to be through a development agreement. Now, ideally. This, the zoning, the development process should raise questions for us. So that as you, you as a council, when you think about this and go, you know what? Never thought about this before, but it occurs to me that there probably ought to be a buffer zone next to the river all along the length of the river. The best follow-up step would be to go put that buffer into the code. Rather than try to rely for eternity on development agreements to solve the problem every time there's a new project. I, I do recognize that's more difficult than it, it's hard, it's easier to say than it is to do. I, I recognize that. But my point being with reference to what Council Whipple was saying earlier is now. It's definitely, you know. Like I said, development agreements are a tool. I'm not trying to advocate against their use. But I do want to make clear that they're not a magic bullet and that where we can rely on the code, we should rely on the code. And so when we can change the code to make the code better, that's, that's a better objective than trying to do everything ad hoc.
Do we have like a, I don't think we do, like a riverbank overlay or a watershed overlay or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of. There are some specific, I know there's some stuff in our code about the watershed that grants public works and specific. Authority for approving and doing stuff that would be part of the CRC process because of the watershed.
The rivers and lake shores plan has a map that has kind of a yellowed area. Is that just kind of like a general plan area or it's just, this is the area that we're discussing, but there's no rules associated with it?
Okay.
Yeah, just a question, like Councilman Christiansen, the buffer is really the, was the issue for me when you heard that. But if that comes up and it's not in the code and, and that's still a concern. What is the, like you said, you know, we could go back and say, that's somebody to look at across the river. But what happens with that specific property? What are the options there?
Yeah, so this would, this would be the classic case where you would recommend denial, where you would, in your planning commission meeting, you would say. I make a motion that we recommend denial based on my concern that this project is going to. As proposed, as proposed, it's going to irreparably harm the river because there's no buffer. The project in the, in the river, right?
Even if there is not a stated buffer that's, I mean, we think that what's there is not as, is not effective.
Right.
But clearly there's something that they've been relying on, so.
Well, because this is a zone change, right? The approval is discretionary, so you can, you can come up with. If you were doing, if this was a conditional use permit, for example, right? And somebody can, like we talked about before, a member of the public comes in and raises a concern that nobody's thought of. Well, too bad for us that we never thought of it before. It's a non-discretionary thing and it meets the codes you've got approved. But when you're making a recommendation to the council on a discretionary legislative thing and some, and you come up with a new idea. You can recommend denial based on the new idea.
Which is also a great time to tee up, hey, this is something we need to look at.
Yeah, exactly. Yes.
Now, going back to this particular development, particularly interesting to me because. Development actually spans two law, one of which was already in the zone. The other one was not. And so if the council, for example, wanted to say, hey, I'm not comfortable with a zone change on this half of it. Because I want to buffer along the entire development, including that other part that was already rezone. Is there any legal authority or do you have to limit it to the half that's being rezoned?
No, I, I think that's still, I think that's still fine. It's a little bit more of a gray area because it's starting to sound more like an exaction. But. But, but as long as you're recognizing, right, that the fact of the matter is. Now I don't know all the dimensions of the project, that they have the right to say. I'm not going to do the part on parcel two, but I'm going to go do the parcel, part on parcel one with no buffer without your permission. They can do that, right? So as long as you recognize why you're, I mean, subject to all the code that Council Whipple was just pointing out.
I would just be careful in that it was shown as one project. But if those properties are in two different ownerships, I would be nervous about telling owner, hey, you need to go. Get an easement or river frontage on parcel B that he doesn't even own.
Right.
So some details are going to play into this.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good, that's a good point.
Just a good, quick comment for the sake of the planning commission. I mean, I, I know there's several councilmen.
Just a good quick comment for the sake of the planning commission. I mean, I know there's several council members who. Are more dedicated than I am and they watch all your meetings. I don't often have that kind of bandwidth, not that I wouldn't love to see your faces. But I read those reports really carefully and I do find that even, even, I mean, certainly independent, whatever the decision is, the bullet points about. Pros and cons and the concerns are really helpful to us. I mean, they're really helpful to me anyway, speaking for myself only. I, I. So independent of whether something gets into the development agreement or it's the reason for denial or the reason for approval, that that nuance really. Anyway, I just wanted to throw out. That information, I find that very helpful because it, and I know those who watch it more. Religiously get even more from the context from that. I think that's just a very helpful process.
One thing that occurs to me, I think about you, Catrice, because I know. One thought, thought that occurs to me is. And I hesitate to say this because I've said it before and I don't think it gains any. Attraction, it basically gets ignored because I understand the political realities, but I'm going to say it anyway. You don't have to give your reasons for doing this. Right? And what I mean by that is. If you were in, if you're in a situation where you're considering a discretionary approval. And you know what you're, you're not going to get what you want. But there's a question about whether you can actually even ask for what you want. You can just say no and not say that you're saying no because you're not going to give what you want, shouldn't be asked. You understand what I'm saying? So, and and I say that because I, I did have one particular instance where we had a closed meeting in advance of. A vote. Where. In the closed meeting, I specifically said. You can deny this project for any reason except for the following reason. That's the only reason you can't. Deny. And one of the counselors took me standing immediately afterwards and I am, I am going to vote no because of. The reason that I had just said. And the only thing that saved us from a lawsuit was that she was in the minority and that the majority approved it. So passed anyway, this, right?
Okay, yeah, so on land use issues, aren't all of our decisions discretionary?
Well, they are discretionary as long, in this realm, it's kind of like. I'm going to give you this, this example by analogy with employment positions. Right, so. Department directors are at will employees, which means you can be. And here's the nuance, you can be fired for any reason except for an illegal reason. Okay, and what that means is, I can be, I can be fired for any reason except for because I'm over forty five. Okay, that's illegal age discrimination. So, so even though it's an at will state and I can ostensibly be fired for any reasons, there are specific reasons that I can't be fired. So.
And you'd be fired for no reason.
Yes, although. You know, if you, if you don't state any reason at all, then it at least opens up that. It gives somebody an opportunity to come and say it was for the wrong reason, right? But the burden of proof is on them, so that's still actually better. Than saying the wrong reason, so. So in the discretionary context, for example, I'm trying to remember if I'm conflating two different stories. I think in this particular instance. The reason that I was telling them not to say was because. They only wanted people of a certain familial status to be able to live there. But that's an illegal, but that's an illegal reason for making a discretionary decision because it's based on. Unconstitutional family status discrimination, right? So, so, so the world in which your discretion exists is ninety nine percent of all the world, but there is a one percent of things that you. So you can't say. I'm not approving this development because you are. Renting to people from a certain race or, right? So some things are illegal, most of them it's not. Yes.
I have a question, so like procedure, and it's helpful to hear like from George about the. That our, our comments and our, our discussions are summarized and passed on. I think that's, that's helpful for us to understand. So I'll just give it as an example, there was the Creamery on Ninth East project, the concept plan for their renovation, their, their rebuild of a new building there recently. That we saw. And one of the concerns that was brought by the planning commission was about like bike parking in the front of the building. So we were saying, we'd like to see some more of that on this, on this project, you know? So in the, in the process of the meeting, we talked with developer and the developer said, yeah, we can do that, we can make that happen. You know, just, just like verbally, yes, we'll, we'll consider that, we'll do that. I think on the planning commission, there's a couple of us who wanted to kind of. Put forth more of a, like, just put that in, like, at least our recommendations have that written down to pass on to the city council. As I understand it, though, we're not like, we don't have, this is not a, it wasn't discretionary. You know, legislative action, it was just like, hey, we'd like to advise that this be done. What's the right approach for the planning commission to pass that on? Our advice or our council? In the, in the case where we're not like, we can't ask them to do it and say no on the basis of you're not going to do that because. As I understand, they have the right to do that, right? Is that?
Yeah, I think I understand the question.
So again, that wasn't discretionary thing, so it wasn't something that you were going to send on the city council that was already zoned for the Creamery. So it was administrated with you. So there's a couple of things you can do, either. Ask the developer specifically, okay, so what does that mean? What are you telling us you're going to do? I'd like to see us get more specific with developers because. Very frequently, especially very experienced developers. They get very vague, general answers that you think you're getting your questions answered. And obviously they're wondering, what does that mean? What did he really just commit to? So either ask them for more specificity or if you don't trust the staff to follow up with that and get it. Then continue the item and say, let me see a revised plan. That brings it back to show me what it is you just committed to do. You can continue an item for an administrative item.
Can you say something, knowing that they want to hurry it along? Can you say something like, I'm uncomfortable with this not being represented on the plan? Is there anything you can do tonight that would ensure that? And then they can then say, I would be willing to put that in writing or like. You don't want to continue it just for them to basically say that, right? Or. Give you more renderings when you don't actually need to see, as long as you know they're going to be there. But what would be a way to not continue it? But not push them into something that sounds like we're forcing their hand? Does that make sense?
So I guess if you're, have a concern like that, I would ask the staff to circle back with you with. The revised plan, if the revised plan doesn't. I don't know, I mean, we can, we can, we've got time between that plan approval that you see and then getting issued a building permit. So we have time to work with the developer, is that window of time? But I'm not sure about. You requiring something that can't be, if it's not backed up by code, if we don't have a code requirement. If they're proffering more parking spaces than. What the code would require, I'm.
I don't even feel like we could have continued it in that case, because of what you're saying.
Right.
Now, if I.
They're meeting the code requirements and we're saying do it differently.
If I understand correctly, you're talking about a situation where they've. Offered something that's purely voluntary and that if they don't do, they get approved anyway.
Right.
Right? So.
Although there was a little bit of discretion in the interpretation of. The proximity of the bike parking and that's something proximity is not necessarily addressed in the code. And in this specific case, they were saying. Just kind of like what they said with the music building is, we have thousands of parking spaces on campus, we don't need to put it. Close enough for the little old lady to walk to the concert, she can take U B X, you know? And so it was, we've got tons of bike parking that doesn't get used over at. At Heritage Halls, they can go there and we were like. Yeah, Old Provo High, but this was, I mean, this was reasonable more than Provo High, this was. Heritage Halls and we're saying, that's not close enough for these little kids who are going to ride their bikes to Creamery and get an ice cream cone together. They're not going to go take their bikes over there, lift them up on the up, the overhead racks and park their bikes. We want them right here in front of the Creamery, you know? But, but code said they had to have bike parking or something, but it didn't say it had to be within ten feet of the front door and we were saying. We think it should be interpreted that way in this use.
Well, that, that's a great question actually from this context because. You know, you do have, that's where you do have some discretion, right? Because you do have some discretion about the interpretation, so. If you have a reasonable articulable reason to say. Based on this interpretation of the code where it's ambiguous that we think is the right interpretation. You don't qualify. Then, then I, then I think you have the ability to continue or to, or to flat out deny. And if they disagree with your interpretation of the code, they can always file an appeal to the builder adjustment, right? So they can always appeal your decision if. But, but it would need to be that kind of thing. If it's a thing where. You know, the code says they need fifty spaces and you're like, I think fifty spaces isn't really enough and they say, well, we're willing to build sixty. But if they build fifty, they've met the code, there's really not anything you can do about it other than apply some.
In that case, we could say we're interpreting this to mean something different than, or more than what's written here.
We're saying you need bike, the code says you must have bike parking. We believe that means you must have bike parking for this building.
In a reasonable.
And if it's not close enough to this building to, for somebody to use it, we think you don't have bike parking for this building.
Immediately after that item, we need to fix our code to be more clear on that point.
Yeah.
So when you identify something like that that you see as a problem, let's fix it in code.
Anything else on development agreements?
It's very helpful, thank you.
Okay, item, let's move to item number three, which I think is going to be really fast, other than. So.
There's numbers here.
Yeah, exactly, so. Item number three is just to update. Because we've just had this whole discussion about how you can address your, how you, the planning commission can express your concerns. In ways that might lead to the council taking action and demanding that those concerns be met. One concern that the council has been wrestling a lot, a lot with is homeowner occupancy. And recently, that has manifested, so I wanted to. Our council wanted me to bring you up to date on some conversations we've had. So you know how we're going to, how on the council side of things, we're going to handle this issue. So it manifested itself as a few zone change, development agreement type conversations. Coming about where we were talking about having development agreements that require. Homeowner occupancy for a certain amount of time. For a year, for a year every time the property is transferred, et cetera. And as we experimented that, this is kind of a learning process where it came up and. The first couple of times it came up and we thought about. Well, okay, it's easy to say that, how are we going to put it into the development agreement and what is it we're actually going to do? If we, you know, and I got, I got started thinking, okay, I've got this development agreement. Recorded on the property that says. This condo must be owner occupied for the first year every time it's transferred. If somebody buys it and doesn't live in it. What am I, what am I going to do? How am I going to like legally go, I'm going to go sue this person for not living in the house? And as we, as we thought about it, we realized. That from a legal framework perspective, what we're really talking about. Is not homeowner occupancy, it's about prohibiting rentals. Right? Which is kind of the same thing, but it's the, it's the other side of the same coin, right? So on the one hand, it's really hard for me to think of a framework where we have a legal framework for saying. You just bought this house, if you don't live in it, you're violating the law. That's different than saying, you just bought this house, you can't rent it for a year. Right? And so, so we've, we've kind of flipped the script a little bit, it's still. About the same policy objective. But we're now talking about it in a legal framework about, so, so the development agreement, instead of saying. There must be C C N Rs for the HOA that say homeowner occupancy is. Required, instead, what we're going to say, what the development agreement is going to say is. There must be C C N Rs that prohibit rentals during the first year. Those C C N Rs must be reported on the property and the deed, as a deed restriction and the deed restriction must. Put the buyer on notice. That Provo City will not issue a rental dwelling license during the first year of ownership. And will prosecute people for renting during that first year. That makes sense? So, so it's, it's trying to accomplish the same. Policy objective. But we're focusing on prohibiting the rental rather than requiring the occupancy.
It's actually enforceable.
Yes, yeah, so it's an enforcement strategy rather.
The objective is to keep the institutional investors from buying it as a rental property. Though prohibition against that one year rental, I think achieves that, I think it does achieve the goal.
And, and again, going back to what I said at the very beginning of this meeting about your institutional independence. None of this is to say that you have to care about homeowner occupancy or rental provisions. Or that you need to mention it in your meetings if you don't want to. But we wanted to explain to you that that's something the council has been struggling with and doing. And the framework that we've developed for dealing with it.
How do you protect the rental, the renters who are in it? Like, because you don't find out about it till they rent it, right? And then you've got somebody who just moved in. How do you protect them and how do you prevent? How do you, it feels like whenever we say we want this to be our objective, we want this to happen and we go in and we hope for a development agreement. Or require one or whatever, but. I just feel like we, it's just one more law. That requires somebody to rat on somebody in order for it to be effective and I hate those. How do you accomplish that goal? Without creating animosity in a neighborhood where people are ratting on their neighbor for renting to their niece?
Well, Bill is creating remarkable, reimagining solutions to that.
And as much belief as I have in Bill. I've lived in my house for a long time and it is a really tricky situation to balance being a good neighbor with. Not ratting on people who are either uninformed or don't care about other people's property rights.
There's no question that it's a challenge and to just say, ah, bummer. Investors own Provo. It's just not acceptable, it's just not.
Right, and I, that's why I totally agree with.
You've got to, so Bill, it's actually, they are working on ways that we can actually get better at enforcing that. Using technology, so that, that will help at the margins. And we do, we do have to have neighbors who care enough to say, yeah, that's wrong, I'm sorry, that's wrong. And as soon as neighbors.
I don't have the time, I got, I got a list of.
Like I want it to work without someone having to report it and I don't know what the answer is for that.
And then, and then they just kind of, they go, they slip away. Like somebody goes and tries to figure it out and they say, oh no, we're fine and they're not fine and I report it again and then like it's a cycle.
And I have a lot of people in my neighborhood. Who have done that same thing, where we're all just like, you know what, at this point, it's more important for me to like you. Than to be right, and so the, the problems just persist due to ignorance or stubbornness. And neighborhood quality diminishes somewhat or investment in a neighborhood, like, like emotional investment in a neighborhood.
Well, I, I do think what you said about the renters is really important because. You love the people and then all of a sudden they're getting punished. Is there a way to put into that, into when the city prosecutes, that the? Landowner has to pay for the renter to move?
Council.
Is there a way to put in that for the renter?
We have been discussing this for years, actually. And we are. Sorely limited by the state about what we can do regarding landlord tenant law. So.
Every good idea we have has already been preempted or we know if we. Found something else in the next legislative session, it would get destroyed.
So, Ryan, I'd say a lot of this is dependent, this is on new build, so this is as, you've got developers coming in. So you're not, I totally get where you're coming from of. Protecting those that are already in homes from renting, but this is, this is a new build and to Council Christiansen's point. Trying to give opportunities for people who live here, want to live here to purchase as opposed to just institutional investors coming in.
And I understand that's the objective of what we're talking about here, but. Let's say that new subdivision in Southeast Provo with the lots of homes, small lots, so great idea. Said that they want homeowner occupancy, they move in, one of them doesn't care that that's the law, runs it to somebody else. We don't find out about it, so even though it's a new build, we don't find out about it till somebody's living in it.
Right.
And so at that point, you still do have somebody who's getting the boot because. The person who owns the property.
Right.
Is represented it.
And just the other, I've brought this up before in our commission meetings, but the, the one year. I don't think that's enough. I like, when, when you're dealing with institutional investors, like they're, they're looking at a thirty year, fifty year horizon and. Like sitting on it for one year, you know, that's nothing.
Yeah, that was my comment too, I was wondering, you know, one change with this, even though I see how it's more enforceable. Is that an investor theoretically at least could sit on that.
Then you have a vacant house for you.
You have a vacant house for a year or squatters or something, right? The other one I was wondering is how does that affect, say. Young, single person graduates from college, goes and buys a townhome, wants to rent out the other bedroom in it to a buddy kind of thing. Technically, under the owner occupied, that was fine, right? Because the owner was there.
Right.
This one would prohibit that as well, right?
This one would prohibit that as well, right, for one year?
Well, it depends on whether we would require a rental dwelling license or, or not. If, if we're literally talking about a loom to another buddy uh as opposed to create, if it's, if it's not operating as a duplex or an A D U, it's multiple people.
That's a family, I love it.
Pain, living in the, in the same unit and technically our definition of family.
Three unrelated numbers and quarters, right?
Well, it, but it, there's, there's. There's more, there's more to the definition than that. It actually talks about living as a family unit without.
Um, second kitchen or something.
Uh, without recompense.
Oh.
Right? So technically, I think even that violates our definition. I don't think we have been enforcing the definition that way, Bill.
You're right.
Yeah. So, uh, and again, there's, this is one of those other cans of worms where there's been discussions, I can't count the number of times we've talked over the last fifteen years about updating the definition of the family, but it's one of those things that every time we think about it, it's so difficult to be decided not to. So, um, so that, the, so the particular situation you're describing, probably technically il- illegal, but I don't know if we've been enforcing against it. We've only been enforcing against it if there's actually two, two units.
Uh, you know this better than I do, but it seems like we have trouble getting judges to agree with us on egregious situations. I can't imagine a judge agreeing with us on something that is nuanced.
Right, is that, right?
Um, and then I do agree that I think the timeframe, appropriate timeframe, something to carefully think about to truly disincentivize.
Oh, and, and just by way of note, it's like, the Utah State Legislature, they, they have zero political will to do anything on that. There was like a report yesterday, today that, that they, to, to go against institutional investors.
Right. Well, they proposed a, they proposed a bill and it got killed, right?
Yeah, it got killed.
Uh, where they were trying to give, they were trying to make the institutional investors wait thirty to sixty days before they could buy so that uh non-institutional investors had the opportunity to buy.
And the, and the home builders and the, everything, everyone said, no, no, that will hurt our.
They want the highest price.
It'll hurt our, our ability to sell our properties.
Ryan, maybe summarize this portion of uh our meeting. And I know some have a seven-thirty commitment.
Yeah, I'm.
This is a.
I'm done, so.
Topic, okay. Any, any other discussion on this or comments?
Cause I wanted to wrap up some reason. I think that this new proposal addresses some of your concerns about enforcement because in these particular instances, what we would need to prove would be nothing more than the fact that the person living there is not the person who owns it. Um, and then we've got enough to actually start a case where, where we followed this framework and the development agreement and the deed restriction already exists. That doesn't address all of your concerns, only a small portion.
No, but I would say it's a step in the right direction. And we need steps. I mean, i- it's like we're swimming upstream uh against just the, the, just the greed of institutional investors. And so we need to do something. And this, this is, these are concrete steps. I'm, I'm encouraged that we're heading in the right direction.
Yes.
Good question. So I wanted, I think that the um, the situation that kind of prompted us in the planning commission to be interested in setting up this joint meeting to kind of discuss the uh, discuss some of this stuff was a situation where we had housing development and I, I might need to have my memory refreshed on this, but we had a, a project come to us that was wanting to offer, it was some, I think it was some townhouse, something a little bit more high density than just like a typical low-density suburban neighborhood. It had some number of, of units that were gonna be guaranteed for sale and not for rent, you know, and the rest were getting for rent. I believe that the recommendation from staff was to recommend denial of the project because we felt that it didn't have enough to meet the city council's stated goals for homeownership and, and, and focus. Now, was that?
Generally, that's correct. It was the project down by the cemetery.
Yeah.
Where the staff recommendation was that developer hadn't sufficiently answered that question, hadn't sufficiently addressed a st- uh, expressed city council of concern. So they had, so that was why there was.
We were discussing, let's get together with the municipal council and say, what is our threshold that we're trying to achieve? And is fifty percent too much, given the build-out?
So now when they proffered sixty-five, and I can't remember what your eventual rec- recommendation was.
Yeah, I think they recommended it.
Yeah, cause that was the highest by far that anybody ever brought.
And two meetings ago, we had a one-hundred unit development just north of the stadium. Offered sixteen out of a hundred. We continued it. They came back and said, yeah, how about none? We said, yeah, how about we deny? And we did. Whole project.
Good.
So again, this isn't something we just talk, you know, or theorize about. We were really trying to like take some meaningful steps towards helping people get into homes.
Now, I remember that one and specifically that one, the developer kept asking us, well, what number do I need to give? And we kept saying, we don't know what number.
And that's.
Yeah, you have enough of established track record that the planning commission can tell on apartments you're looking for this percentage, on houses you're looking for that. We're just still new, too new to this issue.
But again, this goes back to the independence thing before, right? Like, staff on the one hand, they, they have the advantage of, they, they've been in council meetings, council has taken votes. Those votes that are on individual cases, even for staff, are merely illustrative. They're not binding, right? I mean, staff shouldn't be saying to somebody, you shouldn't, we're gonna deny your application because uh the council re- recently voted no on something that was similar. That, that's not actually in policy. It's not in code, right? Staff might say, look, council recently voted no on something. If you don't address that concern, there's a, there's a good chance they'll vote now, vote, vote this one down too. But staff shouldn't necessarily be saying, we're gonna recommend denial based on something that's not their own personal opinion or in the code, right? Same thing for you. Even if you know, so for instance, let's say that the council actually passed a policy that said, anything less than seventy percent for sale is too low for us. If you don't personally agree with that, you should still recommend approval even if it's sixty-five percent.
Which is exactly what.
Did you see what I'm saying?
Sort of weighing that process.
Maybe you're gonna, maybe you're gonna recommend approval every time and they're gonna vote no every time. That's okay. You should base your rec- your recommendation on what's either in the code or your personal view.
So if they ask us, we should basically say, the council's gonna tell you that we're an independent body.
Exactly.
But maybe I personally think that I wanna see this or I, I have concerns if it doesn't meet this threshold and so I'm gonna recommend it.
Exactly.
Can I just, um, Mr. Hill had mentioned that one year doesn't seem long enough. I would say on the prosecution side too, what is the punishment? Because if the punishment is small enough, they'll just keep on doing it because it's easier to pay a few thousand and wait a little time and there they go again.
Well, the good news is that we're experimenting, we're starting uh with a new plan to assess daily fines rather than open one criminal case and have, which usually ends up in a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine. Uh, so we are in the process of, of starting that. Um, I think that Scott's, in the next meeting, is coming with some recommendations to the council. I think one of the things that we probably need to do is uh, address the fines that are actually in our code because our civil fines are actually, it's like thirty dollars a day.
Unbelievable.
You know, it can get up to, anyway, we can max out, but we need to address, we need to address some of those issues. But that's something that we're working on as far as the reimagining. Anyway, I think we're over time, so.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, commissioners. Staff. I guess I would just echo George's comments that one of the first places I turn as I'm preparing for council meetings is to the commissioner minutes to see, it's easy to see the vote, but then to read the dialogue and discussion points that are raised is always very helpful in our preparation. So thank you very much. Unless there's any objection, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting now. Thank you.
You guys so much for coming.
Thank God. Great to meet you.
Recording stopped.